Hey, good afternoon. I want to welcome everybody to the February 26th Board of Commissioners especially called Medium for our Work Session. And today we'll do Tabs 1 through 3, and then tomorrow night we'll do Tabs 4 through 13. So Tab 1 is a recommendation to change the Cobb County Code, and with that I'll turn the floor over to Dana Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development, here to present to you Code Amendment Package 2, which will be considered in February and March of 2018. There are only a couple of items contained in this package, Chapter 6, Chapter 54, and Chapter 134. Under Chapter 6, which is the Alcohol Beverage Section of the Code, there are two main areas for alteration. The first one deals with requirements for alcohol server permits. These are the permits that are given to individuals who serve alcohol to others. It could be a package establishment, it could be a pouring establishment, anywhere where actual alcohol is sold, the individual who does the sales is required currently to have a server permit with Cobb County. This particular change would remove those requirements and would open it up to anybody who wished to provide that particular service. A couple of board members asked me to kind of look at what other jurisdictions have do in regard to this, to kind of see, are we in the norm, out of the norm, or what in regard to the server permit issue? And I'll just be honest, and it's kind of all over the place, and each jurisdiction does it differently. There are some jurisdictions who, as we do it, do it for all people who do sales. There are some jurisdictions where it's only the managers who are required to do it. There are some jurisdictions where it's only package sales, some jurisdictions only pouring establishments. So it's kind of all over the place. So some examples of counties or areas that do require server permits, City of Smyrna, City of Kennesaw, Douglas County, Gwinnett County, these are municipalities that require server permits in the same exact manner of how we do them. There are some areas that do not require server permits, like the City of Acworth, City of Atlanta, Bartow County, and from what I can tell, and I'm not 100% certain, but I don't think the City of Marietta requires them, but I haven't been able to get verification on that yet. So those are some examples of counties and municipalities that do not require them. Then there are others, like Cherokee County, and Cherokee County where they only require it for managers in pouring establishments. So again, it's kind of all over the place as far as what different jurisdictions do. It is a local issue that's kind of more focused on the jurisdiction and what they decide is in the best interest of their community.
Have we had any feedback from public safety, from police?
Commissioner, we, Chief and I have looked at this, and I'm not yet prepared a statement or how I, there's a lot of pieces that we're looking at, and I haven't had an opportunity to talk to my liaison commissioner as well. So I really don't want to come up and say too much without having a better idea of what we're looking at.
Okay. Can we have a conversation before the vote tomorrow night?
The vote will not be tomorrow night, ma'am. This is the second page.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's coming in March.
Okay.
We'll have lots of conversations.
Yes, sir.
Quick. Forget Chief's opinion, but you mentioned package stores, there's not servers in package stores, they just sell alcohol. So to me, that's the owner's responsibility, right? Or do we require them to have the same permit as a server that serves a drink?
Yeah, everybody who sells alcohol either buy the package or buy the drink, and I'm looking for a head nod from Bonnie, who I know is the one that handles this for us, and she is nodding yes. Anybody who actually provides alcohol, either packaged or pouring establishment, is required to have a server permit with Cobb County currently.
Okay.
And I guess the question is why?
Oh, that's what we're trying to figure out. So, okay.
Mr. Chairman, part of the reason for this coming forward is you have a lot of venues, Six Flags being one, the stadium being another one, where they either, for special events, will bring in other employees from out of state, you know, to help with big events, or nonprofits. For example, at the stadium, when a nonprofit works at a concession stand at the stadium, everybody in there has to get a server permit. And so the question was brought forward that, as Commissioner Weatherford said, the ultimate responsibility is with the licensee. It's their responsibility to make sure that all the rules are followed, regardless of whether it's service permit or not. What happens is it goes back to the licensee if the rules are violated. And, you know, and as a regulatory fee, it's not supposed to be a revenue generator. We are only supposed to charge a fee that it costs to, you know, for the background check and everything else. It is not supposed to be a revenue generator for the county. But a lot of it really came down to, you know, trying to help when you need an influx of people, either Six Flags or other big venues, where they may not have the regular full-time staff. And because of the amount of time it takes, if you throw a big bunch in to get the background checks and all that, that's really where it kind of came from to start taking a look at it. Is it something that we really absolutely have to have? Because I don't think it's a safety issue.
I don't want to disagree with you, sir, but it is kind of a last line of defense before that alcohol is served, and that's a concern, to be quite honest with you. We also know that people that have come to get their server permits, some we do find active warrants. And so there are some safety sides to it that we would like a little more time to get back to you, so we could give you good information and not get it just off the cuff, if you will.
Chief, you have an opinion, sir?
I do have an opinion, but Director.
Is it a right opinion, or is it correct, or is this?
I agree with everything the Director said, but I do have an opinion from a law enforcement standpoint, and I think that we should put that opinion in context when we give you some more information.
Okay, I look forward to that discussion.
Yes, sir.
That opinion will include comparison across neighboring counties or jurisdictions to see what their policies are?
Yes, we can work with Dana on that piece as well.
The second area under Chapter 6 deals with provision of alcoholic beverages at amusement parks, where basically, right now, there is a provision in our code where at amusement parks, that both the sale and the consumption of alcohol has to be contained within a confined area. And this particular alteration would keep the sale in a confined area, but allow someone to actually walk around and consume their alcoholic beverage. We have found that Six Flags over Georgia has done a fantastic job under their responsibility as a licensee of ensuring that alcohol is not going to minors. When you look at comparison areas like we now have at SunTrust Park, and their open area where they can consume alcohol, as well as establishments like Chuck E. Cheese, where people are able to, which are, where they are able to consume alcohol in an area that is a child-friendly environment, it can be done in a responsible manner. Six Flags has shown that they have been very responsible in their aspect of this, so we're asking to remove the area that would have them not be confined to a particular area in the consumption of alcohol at Six Flags.
Couple of questions with respect to that. Chairman? Yes. Have there been any reported incidents of alcohol use at the park?
Not to my knowledge, and we can verify, I'm getting a no shake from Bonnie, so there's been no, there have been no incidents, and I didn't think there was, but like a verification.
And if I didn't hear you correctly, because I take my children to Chuck E. Cheese, and have I just been bypassing that parents can walk into Chuck E. Cheese and just be almost as relaxed as the children?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
They're in the bouncy balls.
You can, ma'am. The next area is Chapter 54, which deals with fire prevention and protection, and this was a request from a Commissioner to create some policy intention behind the intent for the outdoor burning prohibitions, so that there's some kind of substance behind why those prohibitions are in place.
Yes, I don't know if you've communicated this with commissioners, but the premise behind this is that we've gone into a sub-portion of the code to just modify what are allowable uses, or what are uses that can be modified under a burning ban, under a burn ban, but we didn't clarify why the policy is in existence. And to modify the policy statement, you actually have to reach back into this code, but that code wasn't up for consideration as part of this package. So this is just really something that's more administrative in nature.
The last section of code in this package deals with Chapter 134, which is zoning ordinance, and this is an alteration via the Open Space Community Overlay District. And this came out of the conversation at the last code hearing, where there was a proposal for the recreational space community, and the board provided some excellent ideas on how that could be addressed within the confines of the Open Space Community Code. Staff went back and took a look at it, and there's really two options for how this could be actualized by the board. So we've actually provided an option 1 and an option 2 under this section of code. Option 1, under the net buildable area calculation, just removes the reference to the impervious community areas and tennis courts and clubhouses and things of that nature. In essence, what that would do is, because right now, under the OSC framework, if you have to take out all of your open space acreage, and then if you are going to do any type, and when you're determined density, and then if you're going to try to build a clubhouse or some amenity, that's being taken out of your density calculations as well. So it actually becomes a penalty for the builder if they want to actually build an amenity package as part of the open space community. This would remove that from taking it out of the density calculations and allow what is really buildable land to be used as part of it. The second option is also a very good option, in our opinion. So either one of these are excellent options, it really just comes down to a board decision how they want to do it. The second option would really allow the developer to reduce the lot sizes up to 1,000 square feet per lot if they were to create a, some type of active recreational amenity as part of the open space community. So one of them deals with how you can adjust, take out a penalty for creating one through the density portion. Another one allows for a little bit additional flexibility in the lot layout in order to create it. So both of these, I think, are, from a staff perspective, are good options for the board to consider, and it certainly would be ultimately up to a board decision on what direction you wish to partake. That's all we have, sir.
Dana? All right, now we're going to Tab 2. We're discussing an update on county health benefits, and Mr. Hagler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman. 2018 is the last year on the contracts we have for many of our benefit programs, and so we'll begin marketing those programs and services next month. Before we begin, we asked Chris Clark, who is the benefits consultant for the county with Epic Insurance Brokers, to come make a presentation to the board regarding the county's health benefit programs and some considerations we ask for your direction on as we move forward.
Selig? Thanks, Tony, and appreciate the opportunity to present before you guys today. I've been the consultant for the county for a good number of years, and, you know, have had a lot to do with kind of how the benefits have run over the last 10 years or so. But we developed a three-to-five-year strategy and wanted to just present that at a high level. There'll probably be pieces of this that'll be coming back before you over the next several months. As Tony mentioned, there's all the benefit vendors are going to market, or the programs going to market for potentially new and improved vendors there. Currently, the county has what, by looking at benchmark-type data, you would assume is competitive traditional benefit program, meaning that the employee premiums relative to your peers are comparable, and that the benefits are at or slightly above, again, other local governments in the area. And where that comes from, we do a benefit survey periodically in conjunction with the GGFOA, the Finance Officers Group in Georgia, and that's where we gather this type of data. The cost, just touching on the cost of the program currently, as we all know, all health insurance is expensive these days, so there is no cheap version of good health insurance that we could get. And your cost is reasonable, given all the factors at play here. You know, our health system that we use primarily is fairly expensive, the fact that retirees are covered, you know, where in some instances retirees don't, wouldn't have health coverage any longer, that adds to the cost of the program. We also have what I would call a traditional approach to how we pay for benefits. And over time, the cost increases at the county over the last six years or so have been a little bit below benchmark levels that we also looked at, where we saw about 5.6% annually on the benchmark versus 5.1 for the county. So it's been managed reasonably well over that period of time. But looking forward, we know that money's tight with every local, I worked with a lot of local governments, and everybody's struggling with budgets and, you know, being able to pay for additional things going forward when necessary. So we're looking at sort of a three-pronged approach, if you will, to ways that we can better manage the program overall. One is to explore purchasing the same or similar services at a materially lower cost. And each of them, I'm going to go into a little more detail on these as we move forward. Number two is structuring the health plan design differently, and structuring it in a concept referred to as consumerism, and we'll talk about why that might be helpful for the program in the future. And then lastly, expand the efforts to support a healthy workforce. In other words, that effort would be keeping costs managed over time by keeping folks healthier over time. Purchasing, I mentioned the number-one area was purchasing in a materially lower cost. We have both of, you know, all the benefit programs going out to bid over the next several weeks. We're working through purchasing on that effort. But for purposes here, we'll be talking about pharmacy and medical, which are the two biggest cost components. So we've met with several planned cost management specialists, if you will. This is specifically talking about purchasing pharmacy and better managing the pharmacy cost. One of those is a company called Scripta, another is a company called Timber Ridge Consulting. Some of their ideas will be reflected in the RFP that goes out, and there may be efforts to work with them more directly in the future. Potential savings, look, we collected the most recent 12 months of paid claims on the pharmacy, you know, de-identified to make sure any personal information wasn't in there, and then we let these program managers look at those and try and estimate what they're saying, what they might could squeeze out of that cost. And on a very preliminary basis, we're looking at a million bucks a year that we could squeeze out, which is about 11%, 10% to 11% of the cost right now. And I mentioned, purchasing has a RFP going out for pharmacy in a few weeks that we're working with them on to co-write, to make sure that the questions and the requirements are properly reflected in there. On medical, another idea that, this is probably a little further down the road, and I mentioned it, we're looking, this is kind of a three-to-five-year lookout, but from the, specific to purchasing medical insurance services, there, you know, we get what appears to be a pretty good discount from Blue Cross Today, and that was vetted and has been vetted over a number of different years in the past, and they've proven to have the better arrangements, primarily with the local health system. And so that's what benefits the county the most, is getting the best deal available through WellStar. However, even with those discounts, we're still paying somewhere in the neighborhood of twice what a Medicare payment would be, and obviously you have to be 65 and over to get Medicare, et cetera. But we're looking at some strategies where, instead of kind of starting at a billed amount and trying to negotiate down, we're starting at a Medicare payment and negotiating up. And it's a strategy that, up until recently, local governments in Georgia were not seriously considering. And the reason is that it creates a natural kind of conflict with the health system when you say, "We're going to pay you 25 or 30% less than you want us to pay you." So it's a longer-term process, it's not something we can just flip a switch and start to do that, but it's an idea that we'll probably want to talk further about and possibly have some meetings, you know, with health system folks and discuss. I hosted a seminar at the Galleria a few weeks ago, where we had a former elected official present who had adopted this strategy in his jurisdiction and to a lot of success. So it's something that we're seriously looking at harder. The second phase of the strategy we talked about is the transition to a plan that has more consumerism principles involved in that. What I mean by that is, you encourage employees to treat their spending of health dollars in the same way they would treat other large spending, like if you were buying a car, for example, you don't generally just go to the closest dealer and pay whatever the sticker says. You know, you're going to shop around, you're going to negotiate possibly, you're going to think about it, you know, there's more things that go into a purchase of other large purchases than on healthcare. And what I mean, an example to think about on the healthcare side is typically today, when you go to the doctor, your plan has a copay, and maybe it's $40, for example. But you may have a doctor that's a $100 office visit and a doctor that's a $250 office visit for the same service, and from the perspective of the employee, they're still paying $40, so they don't think about what that is. If we, what we're looking at is changing the structure of the plan, we're not reducing the value of the plan, we're just, we're changing the structure to where there's higher deductibles, but then the county offsets that by creating, providing a fund of money for each employee typically referred to as a health savings account. And then that fund is there for the employees to use to pay for healthcare expenses throughout the year. And if there's money left over, they can keep that and roll it forward, so that they can build up a balance over time and have a, you know, a safety net, if you will, for any higher costs that they might run into in the future. So it's really changing, whereas, you know, to say it a different way, whereas today, let's say maybe we have a $1,000 deductible, and the employees have to pay that first $1,000, and then the plan pays, you know, their coinsurance part after that, we might move to, say, a $2,000 deductible, but the county funds a $1,000 savings account in addition to that. So the employee exposure is still about the same, it's just that the employees have money to use for those early expenses each year in their plan, and because they have that money that they can keep or continue to keep control of over time if they don't spend it, it creates an incentive to spend it more carefully.
Sure, ma'am.
So the idea behind that, again, is that employees treat medical spending more like they would treat other types of spending. You don't give them less, you just give them a benefit that's structured differently.
Excuse me?
And other larger employers have seen, oh, yes, ma'am, sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just have some questions about this, because it's a new approach to me and maybe to others. So, under a high deductible plan, the employer can provide money in a savings account, would this be done on an annual basis, or would this be one-time money that goes into that account?
Yeah, no, typically it's annual, and typically it's provided on a monthly basis, you know, so you can spread it out over the year. So, you know, so from a cash flow hit to the county, it would be minimal relative to current health costs. Sometimes in the initial year, you may fund a little bit extra at the beginning, just to make sure that account is sufficient to cover early-year expenses that somebody might have, but it is something that, where there's a contribution year after year.
Okay, and you're saying that this is comparable to what an existing approach may be, because, let's say, if there's already a $2,000 deductible, the county would be putting it, or if there's a $1,000 deductible, before a high deductible plan is $2,000, the county can still put in $1,000 to get you back to the current program level?
Or some level, it may not be exactly those numbers, but it's like that.
For an example, that's what I gleaned from what?
One of the ways this can happen, I mean, this is what happens at Delta, and this kind of goes with one of his earlier slides, where you start getting the employees to be healthier. What happens is, each year at Delta, an employee can get $1,000 or $1,100 put into their HSA by Delta, by meeting certain metrics, for example, having a physical, being in within certain parameters for your blood pressure. And if, say, you're out of the metric, you can take a class, you can sign up to a program, and then you get that money, and that all goes into your HSA and is contributed by the company.
So it's incentive-based, which is good.
Yes.
That encourages good behavior.
Right.
But from a cost perspective, what's the benefit to the county if the deductible amount still comes out being?
You see a lower increase in your annual cost. So instead of that 5.1%, it may be down to 3%.
Because they're more healthy.
Because your employees are more healthy, they're also, because they know exactly how much it costs, because they're having to pay for it when they first go, you know, instead of going to the urgent care, they might go to the doctor. Instead of going to the emergency room, you go to urgent care. And so what happens, each one of those steps costs the county less money, because you're not using that higher level of service that costs more money to go to. Now, you're always going to go to the emergency room when you do your things with the boys, and?
You know where my mind is going, because I live at urgent care with two boys. And so, you know, sometimes it is easier for me to go into urgent care immediately than for me to set up that doctor's appointment. So, to me, there are variations of the type of medical needs that are going to be across diverse employee populations.
Right, but one of the things that will happen is, you'll get a situation where it's always easier to go to the urgent care, but that particular day you might say, "You know what? I go to the doctor tomorrow." And just, if you get, over time, with the number of employees and everything, everybody does that a couple times, and more and more, or whatever, you start saving money. So.
Yeah, I'd agree with Commissioner Odd on that, that it, part of the byproduct of this type of structure is it encourages people to find a lower-cost way to get the same care. So you may be giving up a little bit of convenience in exchange for a lower cost, but you benefit because you get to save money, in that pool of money that you get to start with.
I get to save, how is the savings passed on to me versus the county?
The HSA, what's different from an FSA, where you have to spend it every year, and HSA rolls over.
I heard you doing.
Each year, you don't have to spend it all in that one year.
Okay.
Right, so if you had a $600 account to start with, and you didn't spend it all, whatever's left over?
It can roll over to the next year.
Goes into the next year, and you get another 600 the next year. So if it's spent, you know, if you don't spend it all, you can actually accumulate a decent amount over time.
Is there tax implications?
It's completely tax-free. The money that the county contributes is not taxable to the employee, and then when they spend it, it's not taxable.
And also, as an employee, I can put, I put a certain amount of every paycheck into the HSA, and that's pre-tax. So you're putting money into the HSA pre-tax, so then when you spend it, it's anywhere from a 20% to a 30% premium on your money.
Interesting. How does, how would that incorporate with our Cobwell program and our clinic?
No, it's a good question.
As far as savings and?
Yeah, a couple things. So, one of the ways that people could spend less, you know, we were talking about, you know, encouraging people, since it's kind of becomes their money now, and then for them to spend it more wisely, we would assume an uptick in use at the clinic as well, because, again, as, kind of expanding on Commissioner Odd's example, it's like the urgent care's cheaper than the ER, and the doctor visits cheaper than. is cheaper than the ER and the doctor visits cheaper than that and the clinic visits cheaper than that. So we think there'd be a cascading effect of, of folks using lesser costly services, knowing that they can pocket the savings effectively. So, but it also, the third portion of, of the strategy is actually specifically talking about clinic and wellness expansion.
Okay. And this, this would be totally separate from our flex spending account?
That's correct. The flex spending though would change a little bit because when you have this type of health savings account, it, then you can't also have health dollars in the flex spending. So you would still do your dental or vision dollars you might set aside in the flex spending, but the health savings account would be where all the medical dollars would go. So you, so the employees could also contribute to that health savings account in addition to.
And one of the things, one of the things about HSAs is that it's not restricted to just medical. It can be, there's a whole list of qualified expenses. Long-term care insurance premiums can be paid with this. You can use like any deductible or a co-pay you have for vision care, braces, anything like that can all come from this HSA account. So that's what, to Commissioner Burrell's question, that's really why the FSAs, you don't have both at the same time.
Right. Yeah, there's two ways you can structure it, like you were talking about. Sometimes you would segregate the HSA just for medical and still have an FSA for dental vision, or you can run everything through the HSA. We, but see if you did that, then you would compel everybody to take the HSA. If we got to a point where every plan had an HSA tied to it, then we could do that. But if we, in the transition phase, when we might still have a non-high deductible plan as an option, we probably need to keep the FSA for, you know, for those sorts of And again, so speaking towards that, generally this is something you kind of do over a three to five-year period where you introduce the plan and, and maybe an, an extra plan and you promote it with, with a lot of employee communication to make sure there's understanding of kind of the new program and how it works. But usually over time, you start to replace the legacy plans, if you will, with these sorts of plans. And ultimately over a three to five-year period, you go forward with, with just plans that are consumeristic structured. And then I just mentioned here that Commissioners Odd and Weatherford and Director Hagler and myself met with Delta about a month or six weeks ago, talked through their program and the process they went through. And I also wanted to mention Gwinnett has adopted a strategy like this a few years ago and has had some initial success with that.
It would be helpful to know what other, excuse me, Chairman, it would be helpful to know what large municipalities or localities are doing this, so we can.
Yeah, and we can pull that together. Just, I didn't mention this at the beginning, but I work with, my specialty is large local government in Georgia. So I actually work with Fulton, Clayton, Henry, Athens Clark, Forsyth. And so many of them have moved this approach and, and all of them at least have one of these plans as an option within their program.
Yeah, what, what typically happens is it starts as an option and then it, the, do the incentives and the, well, you know, the healthcare benefits where you get money contributed to the HSA. Just giving an example, I mean, the pilots at Delta who have a contract, there is actually a health plan in the contract, but 90% of the pilots don't use it, they use the, the high deductible plan.
Interesting.
Because of the HSA and, and the other benefits.
Okay.
So the third of the three items was expanding our efforts to improve the health of the workforce. And that's two areas really, wellness and the clinic focused. This is probably the highest of the high level stuff we've mentioned in here, but the current clinic location is pretty close to capacity. Actually, some of you might remember about nine or 10 months ago, I was in front of you and presented some information on the clinic, kind of an update there. But initially, when the clinic strategy was first developed and talked about here at the county, there was anticipated to be three locations ultimately. So what we're going to be looking at over the next few months is the potential of adding another location or possibly adding staff or more services at the current location. And again, that would be under consideration later in 2018. And then sort of related to the clinic, but also to the wellness question, if you will, some of the more recent clinics that have opened since Cobb opened about five years ago, Gwinnett opened a clinic and then in City of Atlanta opened a clinic. And both of those have had a full-time wellness person on staff at the clinic, not a county or city employed person, but a clinic provided person. And, and that is a way to kind of help move the wellness focus from something separate to the clinic to something integrated with the clinic, if you will. And we're looking at that as a potential strategy in addition, again, to the idea of possibly a second location or expanding staff at the current clinic. I don't think there's really space to expand staff at the current clinic location, but much like if you remember, you had the fitness center that initially opened by the clinic and then you opened a second location, there might be, maybe an optimal second location might be somewhere closer to the square. So Commissioner Burrell, did you have something or you get, okay. With that, I'm done and any additional questions?
Surprised we didn't look at, obviously where I'm coming from is that when I, when I worked in Washington, you know, we, we always had extended period lunch to go work out, exercise. I think a lot of the reasons people don't use our facilities, they only have an hour for lunch or they're being driven to an hour for lunch and you can't do anything in an hour for lunch. Can't, can't do exercise and you can't eat lunch. Have we looked at modifying that or giving directors, supervisors the authority to let people, you know, if they want to go out there and, you know, and, and use the facilities? And secondly, to expand the facilities for our employees because, you know, a healthy workforce has got to drive down our healthcare costs.
It's not something we haven't looked at, Chairman, but we certainly can talk to the county manager about.
Okay. Cause you know, we have these really nice facilities, like at the Wellness Center and here downstairs in the first floor. I'm sure a lot of employees would like to use them, but if we're telling them, they can, I know we don't, we don't own all the county employees either, you know, they all just work for other constitutional officers. But nonetheless, I'm betting that even if we added 15 minutes to their lunch break so they could get down and work out for 45 minutes, then half an hour for lunch, we would probably derive some serious benefits from that.
Okay. We'll explore that with the county manager, sir. Come back to the board.
And there's a shower and a bath down there, that's right.
So they just clock out for an hour and a half and?
Moving on. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, as I look at the explosion of LA fitness centers and all these, you know, exercise centers around Cobb County, clearly something's going on here where people are using these things and, you know, our employees, I think would be, would, you know, would want to take advantage of them, but again, they're bound by policies. And if we look to expand on those policies, give them a little bit of a break, it might encourage them to do that in combination with this. I love your thing about the HSA. If you're going to make some money off that, of course you're going to, you know, look at it more carefully. So if you give them the right incentives.
That's the, that's the strategy behind that is that, you know, people, if you're able to keep the money you don't spend, you think a little harder about how you spend it.
Okay, all right.
Appreciate your attention. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, tab three. Let Bill and Roger, you gonna, you gonna run the show here? Dr. Tudor?
Oh, my goodness.
All right.
Thank you. That'd be great. Appreciate it very much. Thank you so much, Chairman Boyce and certainly Commissioner Odd, Commissioner Burrell, Commissioner Weatherford and Commissioner Cupid and Manager Hosak. Great to be with you today and present on behalf of the five-person Board of Trustees to the Cobb Employee Pension Plan. Joining me today, obviously already know Mr. Hagler, Mr. Goldman, as well as our long-term, longtime Cobb County employee, Virgil Moon. Sheriff Neil Warren is off keeping Cobb County safe. So what I thought we'd do today is work our way through real quickly, a little bit of background on the plan. And then I've, I know there's already been some general discussion about the challenges that are employee pension plans in general in the public sector now. As I went through a minute ago, there's the five-person composition of the board. Our investment advisor is UBS Financial Services. Our master trustee, SunTrust. Our actuary, Kavanaugh McDonald Consulting. And then Trauma Sanders provides legal counsel. I wanted to begin by first acknowledging upfront, what is the charge of the board? And it is essentially that we are to oversee the retention of investment managers and the custodians for the plan and that we are of course to make sure that the assets purchased are done in a prudent way. That is to balance out the return versus the risk. I want to be clear that despite some mythology that might be out there, the pension board is not empowered to change the nature of the pension plan. That is the domain of the four folks in front of me. In any conversations that anyone has heard otherwise that we're going to change the plan is unfortunately just ill-informed. So what we do today is we come forward and provide an update with regard to where we are for 2017. The data is shared annually as part of the county's annual report and available to all in the public domain. Most years we have been able to come forward and also provide this information to the board. Due to the illness of one of our board members in 2015 and 16, we did not do so. So we're glad to rejoin that process. In essence, the retirement plans are twofold. There's a traditional defined benefit program that was in place and was the only plan through 2009. Currently there are a little bit less than 2,500 active participants and about 2,300 retirees. The plan requires a contribution on behalf of not only the county, but also the employee. Currently that's a 7.25% contribution. It has risen consistently since 1998 and will hit 8.75 in 2025. The benefit they receive is a service factor of two and a half percent per year times years of service, times their highest, I believe it's 36 months of income. Don't get us pregnant if I'm wrong on that. The retirement plan is also is a hybrid version, which went into effect January 1st, 2010. It is a combination of a defined benefit, defined contribution plan in which the individuals contribute 3% of their salary, receive a work ser, a service factor of 1% a year as opposed to two and a half on the traditional plan. But then they are also encouraged to contribute to a 457 plan. The county matches 50% of the employee's contribution up to 2%. And so currently, if we look at the assets and the performance of the plan, as of the end of calendar year 2017, plan's assets had a market value of $647 million, which reflected an increase of $224 million over that five-year period leading to the end of last year. The annual rate of return for 2017 was 16.4%. I point that out and I'm very certainly pleased with the performance of the plan last year, but I also think it's important to acknowledge that that is not the kind of return we can expect for a long period of time. Over the weekend, Warren Buffett released his annual letter to shareholders. He pointed out that the S and P 500 had averaged about 9.9% from 1965 to date. He made a reference that he and Vice Chairman Charlie Munger thought stocks maybe earning eight and a half going forward. So when we look at numbers like that and we realize that we are capped at about 80% equity in the fund, you realize that even an actuarially target of seven and a half percent will require some doing. We, we brought that target down from 2013 to where it is today in 2018, half a point, or I'm sorry, it should be a, what, .05. So we brought it down a quarter, one tenth of a point a year, getting it down to the seven and a half that it's at now. So the point we make with this is when we look forward at the liabilities of the plan, the present value of those liabilities will be driven by an assumption that we can generate a seven and a half percent return on the asset side. So at the end of 2016, the liabilities were a little bit over $1 billion. Of that, 640 million of those were for retirees while 438 million were for active employees. We are awaiting the actuarial report based upon 2017 data. When that becomes available, we will be able to estimate the liability as of December 31, 17. The liability growth over time comes from employees obviously retiring earlier, living longer, both of which are good things for the lifestyle of the employees, but also we have to update the revisions and our assumptions based upon that change in pattern.
Can you go back?
Yes.
Yes. I feel like I need pension plan 101, so I'm trying to follow your numbers and I just, I'm not keeping up with you. I'm just studying your slide here.
These slides should correspond, by the way, to a short report that was also provided.
Okay. And then the next slide after this one, this is the slide I want to come on.
And let me correct on this slide, it could be misleading with where the bullets are. The, the traditional plan liabilities is 430. If you add to that, the hybrid plan liabilities is 7.7 million, that should get you to the 438, 052 that one sees for actives. So the breakdown with the 430 and the 7.7 are for active employees only.
Oh, for active, okay.
By liability, you mean this is what we need or what we have?
It's what we've promised essentially. The way we calculate the value of the liabilities is the actuaries make assumptions regarding when people will retire, what their mortality will be, and they take those assumptions and plug in to our plan and they estimate each year going forward, what we will have to pay out as benefits. So then you reduce that back to a present value or a dollar amount today that is equivalent to the stream of income. And then by comparing that present value of the liabilities versus the value of the assets, we're able to see how well-funded our plan is.
Got it.
Okay, got it?
Back up one more.
Yes, sir.
Back it. So we got a million dollars in liabilities and we've got 700,000 in the account. How many billions? Yeah, what's, what's?
Well, and that's actually the end of 2016, you had 1.08 billion dollars worth of liabilities. And at the end of 17, we don't have the liability calculations for, through 17 yet. We're waiting on an actuarial report. But the punchline is our liabilities are going to probably be, I'm just guessing, over 1.1 billion at the end of 17. We have assets that total, if we back up, what, about 647 million at the, at the end of the year? So that tells us unfortunately that our value of our assets is about 53% of the present value of our liabilities.
53%.
Yes, ma'am. And, and so on the slide that says assumption changes in funding ratio, what it shows, it shows for the last roughly 20 years, what the percentage of essentially the assets value as a percentage of the total liability of the plan. So for example, in 1997, our assets had a value of 95% of the county's expected liabilities on the pension plan. It dropped to 69 between 1997 and 1998. We saw a general downtrend again between 2004 and 2007. And really the funding ratio has been pretty consistent in the low 50% window now for about the last seven to eight years.
I, I think you need to explain that. I mean, I know what it is and I think some people do, but I think you need to explain how we went from 95 to 70 in one year.
In 2007, the decision was made by the Board of Commissioners to change the, what is, that time was the only plan we had, the traditional plan. Prior to 2008, the traditional plan played 1.9% as a service factor. So you took your years of service, times 1.9%, times your earnings base, and that was your benefit. In 2098, it changed from 1.9% to 2.5%.
When is this, what year?
In 1998. And it changed not only for going forward, but also retroactively for employees at that point. So, yeah, so effectively overnight, the value of the liabilities went up about 31%. If you think about 2.9 as a markup over one, uh, two, 2.5 is 31% higher than 1.9. Now, what the other change that was made is employees prior to 1998 did not contribute to the plan. They started contributing at that time, I believe it was four and a half percent, 4%. And gradually over time, we have increased that. But the big drop in the funding of the pension plan occurred in 1998.
Okay. And what is the general benchmark for what we should be funding our liabilities?
Well, eventually, I mean, obviously a pension plan, well, I shouldn't say obviously, but pension plans would like to be closer to 100%.
To 100.
I will tell you that both private and public sector pension plans across the country are underfunded. One distinction I would make is that private sector pension plans, their, their liabilities are reduced to a present value using lower rates. So if anything, the, the public sector plans get a little bit of an easier threshold because we're allowed to use a blended rate based upon rates of return for a variety of assets. I mean, ideally, we would love to see this at 95% where it was. So how do you get there? And it's pretty simple from my perspective. You either put in more money, that comes in the form of either increased contributions from employees or the county on an annual basis, a lump sum dollar amount coming in as typically mandated by an amortization schedule. Let me back up and explain that. Four years ago, the, the pension plan locked into a 30-year amortization schedule, meaning that we went into a position where if we continued to make additional payments every year for 30 years, we would close that funding gap. We are now in the fourth year. So our, our so-called closed-in amortization schedule has 26 more years on it. So if we continue to make the recommended contribution for the county on top of the employee's contribution and the portion of the, of the employee's salary that the county contributes, then it will close that funding gap in 26 years, provided our assumptions are correct.
But what is the benefit to current employees? I mean, right now, current employees, they don't have the, they don't have the benefit of the pension plan.
Well, some do. Those, those that weren't employed prior to 2000. Those that, those that weren't employed prior to 2010 are likely still under the traditional plan, where they would now be contributing 7.5%, and upon retirement, receive 2.5% service factor per year. Employees hired after 2010 are only in the hybrid plan where they can earn a 1% service factor.
Right, but they, but they are also, they have a cash plan. I mean, they participate in that.
457.
But I think the important thing to note here, and you mentioned it, was the assumptions that go into this. In order for the 30-year or the 26 years remaining to work, the return on investment has to be a certain number.
It has to be 7. Yeah, the assumptions are we have to have 7.5% return on investment.
And do we not have to have, if we have more people retire early?
Right.
Because in a defined benefits plan, if you're not hiring people on the bottom to continue to pay into it, which we're not because we have the hybrid plan, as more and more people retire, you have less and less people paying in. And so that 26-year plan, I mean, that was a snapshot four years ago, basically, that 30-year.
When we set that, we set, but we will update it with actuarial tables. I mean, the actuaries will provide us in the next couple of months.
Right, but where I'm getting at is that annual contribution?
Right.
Has to continue to go up just to keep, to stay up with the 26 years, to be caught up in 26 years, does it not?
Well, certainly, the return on existing assets will close some of that gap.
Right, but if you don't have as many people, I mean, if you don't have as many people contributing into it, especially the ones that are covered under that plan, the pre-2010 people, then you're going to have to make up the difference.
Right, the further we go in the future, the more individuals become retirees in which they're taking funds out of the traditional plan as opposed to putting them in.
Right.
But also, the present value of the liability will drop because if I'm a 70-year-old person, my expected pension receipts are going to be a lot lower than when I was 60. But, but just Commissioner, it's going to require significant commitments above the county.
Because this gap has gotten bigger. I mean, if you just look from 2010 to 2016, it's gotten a little bit smaller percentage funding. I mean, we're barely holding on.
It looks, it looks to me to be pretty stable from about 2008 to date. Now, I will tell you that we just did an experience study for the county by which we look at how actual employees in the county retire and what their mortality looks like. And it's very likely that the number that is 23%, 53% now could likely be dropped to 51% or perhaps even below. So I mean, it is, it is a serious concern I would have.
The liability assumes that everybody's going to retire and everybody's going to live to be 100.
No, it assumes that, it assumes that everyone has a life expectancy and retirement pattern consistent with what is in the actuarial tables. And it says two ways of doing it. One, you could use actuarial tables with regard to life expectancy and retirement for the general population. You could use them based upon Cobb County employees only, or you can do something in between. I think what we're looking at now is using the mortality tables based upon the statewide averages. In part, the problem you always get in statistics is you can customize your sample, and you'll get it smaller and it'll be more representative about the population you're wanting to say something about, but it also becomes a little bit more vulnerable to noise because the smaller samples have more sampling variation in them. If that makes sense.
So do full-time and part-time workers participate in this plan or just full-time?
Just full-time.
All right. Because I know I was, I was at another program the other day where they were talking about Cobb County employees. It was actually not a county program. It was, you know, one of these boards around here. And they said that Cobb County over the last four year, last 10 years has gone, has gone, has reduced its employee population by 400 people. All right? Does that name, does that number resonate with you, Tony?
Dr. Rob, that knows that our population.
Number of employees we have in the county has gone down or up over the last 10 years?
The only thing that would, I'd say, that contributed to the reduction, sir, would be the IRA that was done in around 2010, and we had 236 people who took that package and retired.
Right.
And out of that, they did reduce positions. I think it was roughly over 100 positions that were reduced.
So do we have more people now for county employees, all right? Although, let's, let's look at this across the board, all right? Say, in 2008, given everybody that's in this system is full-time, do we have more people participating in this system or less?
We have more people contributing in both traditional and hybrid together than, than before.
So that means we have more employees now than we did?
More employees, yes, sir.
But, but I think the important thing to keep in mind is that prior to 2010, anybody that was hired was just in this plan, and after 2010, when they go into the hybrid plan, they're only contributing 1% into this plan, and the rest is going in the hybrid plan.
Contributing three, getting one year's credit.
Right.
Are the, are the contributions mixed? It just goes into a general fund, or you segregate them by hybrid and traditional?
The contributions made by the employees, whether they're traditional, which is the 7.5, or the hybrid, which is 3%, it goes into the general mix of the investments that are put in for the pension plan.
So the 1%, the hybrid people are contributing to this plan, they're just not contributing enough to keep this plan alive?
They're contributing based on their.
For the old traditional people?
They're, they're contributing based on their benefit that they would ultimately draw out, would they?
Way to think about it, Commissioner, Commissioner Chairman, would be the current employees are putting in 7.5% to earn a 2.5% benefit.
Right.
The hybrids are putting in 3% to get a 1% benefit as it currently stands. So to some, the funds are mixed together, so they're managed as one pool, but certainly we can, you can do the accounting to break out the liabilities because that is always a concern about having cross-generational fairness.
But clearly, we have more people now under the hybrid plan than under the traditional because we brought in more revenue under the hybrid plan, the $7 million versus the $2 million, right?
Well, we've got about.
Go back to, there's a chart that tells how much the liabilities are. Go back to the liability chart, right there.
Okay.
The hybrid plan has liabilities of $7.7 million, and the traditional plan has liabilities, I'm sorry, $7.7 billion.
Million.
Million. And the traditional plan has liabilities of $430 million.
And that is only of active employees. That's, that's where the, the bullets can be misleading on this. If you take the 438 and you break that down, 730 are traditional plan liabilities and 7.7 are hybrid plans. So we've got a lot of liabilities for current employees. If you started working here in 1990, you could, you could still be in that pool of people that are current employees or active employees that are in the traditional plan.
So for the $430 million traditional plan liabilities, all right?
Yes.
The people that are under that plan?
Yes.
Are they providing enough resources to fund that liability?
That's a good question. And I think that the pressure to raise the contribution from 7.5% to 8.25 was a step toward that.
Okay.
Because one of the things we want to make sure is that we do that. Now, the other issue becomes, if in fact, Bill maybe will give us hard answers on this, but the other issue becomes people that got years of credit from two decades ago may have paid very little, but they still have great benefits going forward. So there is always this push and pull on the generational battles between the workers.
Good, good.
Yeah, and just to add to that, Chairman, real quickly, as you can see, the $640 million on the retiree side, that's the vast majority of the liabilities that are outstanding. So the people that are paying in for the, whether you're on the old plan or the new plan, those are covering the cost for them, but we also are trying, the county's portion is having to pick up the retiree portion that we gave for retroactive benefits. So to answer your question, the hybrid plan liabilities, we're covering the, the normal costs of their, their annual cost for their liability, and the adjustments we've made for the traditional plan, we believe we're pretty close to, we're basically, we're doing that as well. But what we're trying to do is make up the difference on the $640 million that's already outstanding. What does affect us, though, is those assumption changes that Commissioner Ott talked about.
The real challenge is that 2/3 of our liabilities go to retired people.
Exactly.
And they don't contribute a cent to it.
What portion of that $640 million? I mean, obviously, there's a dollar amount associated with the 1.9 that it was, right? And then there's a dollar, the $640 is, is associated with the 2.5. What is the delta?
I don't have that for you, sir, but we can get that.
Certainly could go back, you'd have to go back historically and do those calculations because we'd have to break down each individual, see how many years of service we're at, pre-1998 versus post-1998.
But the liability includes those that are contributing before the 2.5 as well, or were in the plan?
I don't think employees were contributing, don't correct me if I'm wrong, before 1998.
Well, what I mean is that liability includes the ones that weren't contributing before it raised to 2.5 as well as the ones that are 2.5.
Yes.
So that, that number is a, is a combination as well.
Right.
Question.
Another question. Do you have to opt into the hybrid plan, or are all employees automatically?
They're automatically enrolled, and the county's, the defined benefit program is automatic. 3% goes in, 1% service benefit is optional for the defined contribution part, the 347. And we've tried, the board has had discussions with our advisors, and we would like to see a world in which more employees maxed out their 407s, simply so they're better prepared for their retirement life, but it's certainly not something that we mandate.
Okay, is there a comparison about what the possible return is to employees under the hybrid plan versus the traditional plan? Are there differences as far as?
Yeah, it's a lot more expensive for us. We don't have the money to fund the liability. That's the problem.
As far as the return to the actual employee, what is, what differences are there in that return to the employee upon retirement?
Right, right now, if it's, it's the ratio of what you put in as an employee under the hybrid to the service credit is the same under the hybrid versus the traditional, it ought to be same kind of return, I would think. The issue to me is if you move to a defined contribution-only plan, then you're shifting the risk to, away from the county, and you're basically, in some degree, you're giving employees the ability to manage their own funds.
And that is something that an employee would have to choose to do, to do the defined contribution only?
Well, you can do it one of two ways. You can have it 100% where the employee has to choose, or you can have basically where the county would, in essence, match a percentage of an employee's pay every month into a defined contribution plan, and then the employee can opt whether or not they want to add extra. The 407 is like a 401K. And so what happens is the employee would be accruing the money in, based on a percentage match from the county, and then any additional money they put in, and then it would just be a matter of whatever percentage return on investment the employee gets and manages that account. But the money is theirs, and so right now, if you're in the traditional plan, until you're vested, if you leave the county, you get the money back. And once you become vested, then you cannot draw, you don't get any of the money until you turn 60, right, Virgil? And so what happens is when you, if you move on to another job or whatever, that money stays here, whereas under the, a hybrid or a defined contribution-type plan, that money is put into an account that is managed by you. And if you leave, it goes with you.
Okay. What is, you know, maybe I had some experience of having one of these plans prior to coming here, but what is the effort to educate employees about their options under this plan? And is this something that can be modified on? I believe I do this, I might just be automatic with renewing my benefit package per year, but is this something that employees have the ability to change when they update their benefit package?
We do provide pretty, I think, helpful educational programs for employees. Tony, you want to brief them on ICMA?
Yeah, we, at Orientation, we dedicate about an hour of the time for representatives from ICMA to educate the employees on the pension plan and about the defined contribution. We do have a automatic opt-out program for 1% of the defined contribution, so employees are enrolled automatically in the 1% defined, and they have the option at any time to elect to come out of the plan. But doing that a few years ago has significantly increased the number of people participating in the defined contribution. So we have about 75% of the, the hybrid employees who are participating in the defined contribution.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, I would give you a kind of a, another comparison point. The University System of Georgia has two plans. The traditional plan was called the TRS system by which employees put in 6% and generated 2% service credit, beginning in the early 1990s, or became an optional plan in which employees are required to put in 6% and a contribution comes from the state. So it's not without, outside of the realm of possibility to require employees to fully participate in a defined contribution plan. It happens in other venues.
And you might add, how much, how much is the budget for next year for the state to have to add to that pension plan?
I don't know the number, but it's pretty healthy.
That's right.
A large portion of the state's additional new money for the university system?
Right.
Is funding what is, or actuarial, shortfalls on the TRS program.
Yeah, that and also the teachers' pension plan. So, I mean, this pension thing isn't just us. You know, compare, is there like a reference point for other public institutions that, where they're at in their, in their, in their funding of the liability? Are we like in the middle, down at the bottom 10%?
That's a good question. Virgil, you see this at the national level?
Yeah. I've got the question, Mr. Chair.
Virgil also works on an advisory board for Gatsby with regard to the accounting standards that go into playing this.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman and Commissioners, a national public pension averages study just came out, and it went through year 17, and the average percent as far as the funding for the national average of both, and this is local and state systems, and these are only public pension averages, not private sector, was 71.4%.
So we're significantly below it.
Yeah, and just for reference, generally, generally accepted, the rating agencies, GFOA, all the large public organizations think that 80% is a healthy number for pensions to be at. You still ultimately want to get to 100%, but 80% is considered healthy.
Okay.
So the national average isn't healthy.
So what is, what is the county's vulnerability by being at 53% today?
I'm sorry.
What is our vulnerability by being at 53% today? What's worst-case scenario?
There are two things that come to mind. One would be that it means that down the road, we're going to have to commit ever, perhaps even ever-increasing amounts of cash to close that gap. At least we find ourselves in a position where our liabilities are even more out of line with our assets. The other one is, obviously, we in Cobb County are very proud of being a handful of counties with AAA bond ratings, and I would, I don't ever want to see a situation in which this could somehow be construed as a signal that anything other than the client-defined fiscal help that our counties always run in. But those are the kinds of things I would continue to monitor.
When you say down the road, the lower that percentage is, and say if you're 53% versus 43%, does that mean that that exposure could happen sooner than later versus being at 70 or 80%? You know, I'm just trying to figure out.
Well, I guess presumably.
When, 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 when is there a fire here that we need to start? You know, is it a fire today, and is the amount that we're contributing over that 30-year window, is it adequate to steer us away from it, or do we need to be doing something different?
I, again, I have pretty good confidence in our actuaries, but I think that I would prefer, speaking as a citizen, not as a, not as a member of the Tax Commission or the trustees of the pension plan. I mean, I think actions that we take to right the ship now would be welcome because if we're that far under the national average, then it would, I would be concerned if we continue forward, then we find ourselves in an even less well-funded position. Now, again, the notion of the 26 years remaining on the closed amortization period means that if the assumptions are right, and if the county continues to make the contributions that are prescribed by that amortization period, then we will close that gap in 26 years. But again, we need to be clear, but what we're talking about is more money coming in either as employees contributing more of their salary, as the county making more of a match against their contribution, or against lump sums coming in that are, that would be required, or I don't say mandated, but required or suggested by the amortization schedule.
One of the things that has happened in the private sector is, generally speaking, the defined benefits plan in almost any case are not sustainable because they do require hiring people on the bottom end to replace people going out on the top end. So what a lot of companies have done, and I think IBM was one of the first ones to do it, is what they do is they freeze the defined benefits plan, which means that all of the benefits that the employees have earned to that point, you can't take away. So you freeze the defined benefits plan and then switch the retirement over to a defined contribution plan. And then when you freeze the defined benefits plan, for example, here, what would happen is the county would have to issue a bond to basically make the defined benefits plan whole. That's the lump sum that Roger's talking about, and then you switch to a contribution, a defined contribution plan. But one of the things that IBM found out through a lawsuit was you have to account for those employees that have been around for longer and are older. So what happened there was they had a higher percentage match for the older, longer-term employees to make up for the fact that they didn't have as much time in the defined contribution plan. And then after a certain period of years, then all the employees get matched with the same percentage moving forward as defined contribution plan. The benefits are, I mean, if you do that, what happens is those folks that were covered under the defined benefits plan know that their pension is protected because you've taken the lump sum, you've made it whole movement that point forward, and so that benefit that they have earned, they're not going to lose. benefit that they have earned, they're not going to lose. And then when you switch over to defined contribution plan, the employees know that, um, the money that they are now putting in there, um, is also protected because it's now in their name. And, and it doesn't rely on a 26-year amortization or, um, a certain amount of return on investment to make sure that it all works. Because what happens is the county is literally, would just be putting in a percentage match of an employee's pay every paycheck.
Is, is what he said right?
Sounds good to me, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you then. Why are you there while I was listening?
You know, we've seen, and again, this, and I think as alluded to, this is not a new issue in the public sector. It's been a pressing issue for probably a decade, um, or more. Uh, there are counties and, and states that are in much worse shape. But I think, you know, it's an opportunity to explore avenues to which we firm up our position.
So the only thing I have is that we're supposed to be, have a positive slope back up to 100%. And yet we've been flat for four years.
Right.
I, I'm guessing somewhere in the near future, we're going to start showing a little bit of an uptick?
That's what the amortization schedule would suggest to be the case. Now, of course, again, we just went through another, um, another experience study. So what, what we can't control, and we don't know with perfect accuracy, is the pace by which individuals retire, as well as, of course, their mortality. Both those things play into the liabilities as well. But yes, you're correct, sir. We should start seeing it run from the 50s gradually on a march up to, um, up toward 100%.
But we, but we don't know how much, um, it's not the same amount of money every year. Because every time you up, you revise the numbers,
Correct.
we could, I mean, it's not like a house loan or a car loan where you basically, when you sign for the loan, they say, here's your amortization schedule over the next five years, pay for your car, and this is what you're going to pay. And, you know, X amount is for, uh, interest in the beginning, and this amount for principal. And as you get closer to the end, it switches. This, this could change. So, I mean, the county may be putting X amount of dollars in today, and then when you get this report back, whenever you get it back, it could say, now you got to pay X plus into it.
That's correct. I mean, you, they can give you a full amortization schedule for the 26 years remaining now, but depending upon the actual performance of the asset side, as well as the actual retirement and mortality, the numbers would be correct going forward.
But, but I would think with a 16.4% return last year, we'd have to have a little bit of an uptick. If we don't, then I'd be very-
We haven't, we haven't, again, we haven't seen the 2017 numbers yet.
Okay, all right.
But also, working against that will be this, the experience study, which I believe is going to show people retiring earlier than maybe had been assumed.
Boy.
So the earlier you retire, obviously, the greater the liability goes up.
Okay, all right.
One more question. I'm sorry. I know we've started asking questions before the end of your slide presentation, so we may be, this time may be asking you questions that are going to come up. But, um, you provided there three steps the counties can take to reduce exposure. One, employees can contribute more to their plan. Um, two, the county can increase the match towards, um, the liability. And what was the third one?
Lump sums that go in as, as directed by the amortization schedule. Those are the three things on the asset side. Now, on the liability side, you could also explore how one, how one adjusts their liabilities. And whether it's, um, through thinking about whether you generate credit toward a pension through overtime work or not, things like that. That's, that's the liability side. And different enterprises have looked at how they've done that. The third level, which we can't-
I don't understand that. I don't understand that.
Yes, if you're under a defined benefit program, um, and you work, say your salary's $50,000 a year, then your, then your retirement will be based upon 2%, 2 and 1/2% times the number of years times 50,000. But if you were to go in the last couple of years of your employment and work lots of overtime, then that would push up the value of your retirement benefit. Because it's based not upon your lifetime earnings, but upon, is it the last two years or three years? Last five years?
And, and we had, we do that here.
So that would just increase the liability?
Correct.
Sure. Let me give you an example from the university system. Um, if, if, the university system is the last 24 months of your salary drives the defined benefit program. So what they have done now is they step back and say, in that last 24 months, you cannot exceed what you made a year before that by like more than 2% above the adjustments in salaries. So, so public pensions and private pensions have started to kind of put in place remedies to prevent people from spiking the base at the end.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, my thoughts are going towards what keeps someone from trying to make sure that their, you know, their strong worker or their friend in the department walks away with a great benefit package. I mean, it just-
And again, we're not, I, I don't want to get too close to, uh, making recommendations on how to change a program. That's your domain. But, you know, one way to think about it might be to say, for overtime, we're going to make contributions to the 457, or something like that, as opposed to having it go into the defined, uh, contribution plan.
And that's one of the advantages of a-
Okay, okay.
That's one of the advantages of a defined contribution type plan. If someone works more hours or higher pay, the last year is all that happens is they get, they get a higher percentage match for those years because they made more money. But it doesn't, um, increase the liability because the, the pension's not being determined by accruing that 2 and 1/2% times your salary. You're just, you're getting a bigger amount of money into that, into the money, um, and, under a defined contribution plan.
You know, what will be helpful, because you keep putting the onus back on us for the policy piece, and this is something I'm still learning, is just helping us understand even beyond this conversation, maybe, um, documenting what are various options we could consider. Should this become an issue? I mean, today, I don't know if I should think that the 26-year schedule is not adequate. I, I guess I'm not walking away from this conversation thinking that, that it's not, again, because nobody's telling us that there is-
Commissioner, I just want to address that real quick, because this is always a conversation each year when we go meet with the rating agencies. Obviously, 53.8% is not where we'd like to be. It's not where they'd like to, like to see us to be at. Um, so as a part of that, when we close the amortization period, going from a 30-year down to 26, we shared with them the plan and what we see going forward. And they're in favor and support of that, knowing that we can't fix this overnight. I mean, you can't fix a billion-dollar liability overnight. So you're going to need the 26-year period. Now, there are steps we can take, and as, like Roger said, um, you know, we could look at the liability side, but this board's looking at it from the asset side. And one of the things we did is try to set up the best practice or best policy we could, which is to close that amortization period and say, we're paying it down over 26 years. Now, with that being said, as Ro, as Roger mentioned, as long as we make our annual required contributions and the assumptions come in, then we will absolutely close that gap. But, you know, we don't know what the rate of return is going to be in the market. We don't know the rate of retirement, and we don't know the mortality of the retirees. So those will all be a little bit of influx, regardless of what we do. Um, but, again, as long as we're showing positive steps, I think we're going to be in a good place. But there are options we could look at to explore with the board as, you know, as how do we move forward. But the 26-year plan is showing progress. I know the chairman mentioned, we haven't seen an uptick in the funding ratio. And the reason is, is we discounted our return on investment. During those three years, you saw it at 53.8%. We were stepping that back down. As, as Dr. Tutterell mentioned, we were stepping down from 8% to 7 and 1/2. Every time we did that, it added to our liability. So holding it flat at 53.8% during that time was actually a positive step because we added to the liability, but we paid in more. So we kept it flat. Now that we've stepped, stopped at 7 and 1/2%, we would like to see that move forward and start ticking away slowly and surely and move in the right direction.
And let me, um-
Sorry.
No, no, let me try to clarify. Um, the, the point here is, when we made the decision to go from an 8% assumed rate of return on assets down to 7 and 1/2, that was a step toward being more conservative. Because we did not believe that 8% was very conservative going forward. So the consequence of that is, as you bring down the assumed rate of return on your portfolio, that means that the dollar amounts that are promised down the road have a higher present value. A way of thinking about it is, if I promise to give you $1,000 a year for 10 years, if I'm going to go invest my money and get 8%, I need less cash today at 8% to invest than I would if it's at 7 and 1/2. So going from 8 to 7 and 1/2% on the assumed rate of return raised the present value of the liabilities and probably affected the funding ratio in a way that, that kind of counteracted the performance we had in 2017.
Um, another, another, um, thing that was talked about three or four years ago was, um, because of the county's triple, triple-A bond rating and the low interest rates that the county would be charged on bonds, um, would be to issue a bond to close, to completely close the gap, um, which would then, over the 20 or 30-year period that you would be paying the bond, it would be a set rate that would be established today. And, um, because of the low interest rate that the county would be charged, you would not pay a lot of interest on it. Um, and then that would basically, now you don't have, you don't necessarily have to worry about the same assumptions, um, and a lot of the other unknowns that are out there now.
Would all the contributions and everything stay the same?
Yes.
If, if we issued a bond, you'd have a set debt service schedule, as Commissioner Ott stated. However, that's still operating on a liabilities built on those assumptions. So if you issued a bond today for the $1 billion of liability, we would pay debt service payments over the next period of time, 30 years or whatever, to pay that off. But if the, if the assumptions don't come true, then you're, like, say, we don't earn 7 and 1/2% over those next 30 years. You're still going to be paying additional dollars because you still have that liability that you owe to the retirees.
And that's why when the discussion was had, it was that that's where you would have, do the action of freezing the defined benefits plan and basically switching to defined contribution plan. Because then the libri, the liabilities would not change because you wouldn't have to worry about the assumptions. Because basically, you would be freezing at that point in time, you'd have that amount of liabilities, um, moving forward.
Well, we don't have a billion-dollar liability. We have assets as well. So we have a delta between the two, do we not?
That's correct.
So the bond would no, would be nowhere near a billion dollars.
Not, not a billion dollars, no, sir.
And if we did a bond only to get us up to the average of 80%, that would be even less.
That's correct.
What about the 30-year amortization that Dr. Tutterell was talking about that we do now? Would that still be going on as well?
Depends how you, I mean, if, you would not be needing to amortize it if you borrow the money, um, by, by issuing the bond to close the gap. But again, as Bill says, i- if in fact the day comes around and the liabilities are higher than we thought they were, then the bond will not necessarily cover them all, and you still have unfunded liabilities. Or in your case example, Commissioner Weatherford, something below 80%. I mean, there are probably no perfect solutions. One, I'll give you a counterexample. From the 1980s, my father worked for GMAC. And without getting into the dynamics of who bought who, they ended up selling off the entire pension plan to an insurance company. So when you do that, you do, you do essentially get rid of your entire liability. But those insurance companies that take over that pension make a pretty healthy premium themselves. So it's not necessarily a cheap solution. But it is, it's probably the only solution that, that pushes the reinvestment risk away from the municipality.
But what you're saying is, if we funded it with a one-time cash infusion, we wouldn't need to do the amortization unless the liabilities increased over the next 20, 30 years.
You wouldn't have an amortization payment every year, but you would have the debt service on the bond. So it would be predictable that-
But there would be a, but there would be some kind of offset. I mean, we're already pay, paying something now. And all I'm saying is, that delta would not be as great as we didn't have already paying something. Amortization. I mean, we're paying, you're saying we're paying an amortization schedule now for 30 years to try to get it up so much every year? If we gave it one cash infusion, we wouldn't have that payment or that amortization in our budget. Is that correct? Am I, am I trying to oversimplify this? Should I ask Commissioner?
When you say, Commissioner Weatherford, when you're saying cash infusion, are you meaning going to the debt markets and borrowing a big slip, issuing bonds?
Well, instead of using, instead of using the amount of money we do to pay for the pension, like the $7 and 1/2 million a year that we're putting in the pension fund now, we would pay $7 and 1/2 million to pay for a bond.
Right.
All right? That's basically the trade-off.
That's what I'm trying to say.
So what would, I guess the only real difference would be if the bond has a more attractive rate, borrowing costs the county has,
That's right.
than what we would have through-
For that amount of money, would we, would we need to put less in? Would the interest rate on the bond be less than it has, 7 and 1/2 million dollars a year? That would be the, that would be the question.
Possibly because of the-
But, but in order not to get too far down the road here, okay, I'm not a big believer in pay, in believing to pay, borrow money to pay off debt. I'm not a big believer in that, all right? Because then you get into this, how did we get into this practice? All right? And it started 20 years ago, and they changed the retirement schedule without requiring them to fund more money, all right? So now we're paying for bad past behavior. And, uh, I hear what they're saying here, but I'd be very, very careful about wanting to go down this road. Because now, all right, now we're committed to something for 30 years, and if I need that money for something else, I don't have it.
Well, I think we're, we're trying to fix past sins and trying to correct it. And that's the job of this board. And I don't know what the answer is, but I'm saying we're paying a certain amount now. If we went the other route, we would pay a delta between what we're paying now and that, or even less. And it would be a fixed amount for 30 years. Right now, we don't know what that amount is going to be every year for 30 years. And then we fix this problem. We have hardly zero debt, so we could probably borrow this and more if we needed to.
But the problem is that-
But if we had to, I'm not advocating that we do that.
If, if something happens, we have another recession, okay? There you are.
Service the debt.
Absolutely. Now we got to service the debt and also fill in the delta for what we didn't, for not, for the commitment.
Right. You would lose, you will, you would lose a degree of freedom. So-
Exactly.
But the other half of the side is, the same factors that would cause us to have to raise our contributions on the amortization schedule could also cause the amount of revenue, the amount of cash generated by the bond to fall short of the liability 26 years from now.
Right.
So there's good, there's good pluses and minuses both ways. We have to do the math. And there may be a tax-revantage reason that we can borrow money lower, and that helps in some way. But again, we came here today just to talk about where the plan stands, and we would never presume to tell you-
It'd be a very spirited discussion.
Yes.
Uh, but anyway, uh, my, my brain housing group is, is freezing up here. The economics one-on-one's been really fascinating. But I think that the point here is, is that we have to stay, we have to be very disciplined here in the future. And both sides, your, your really terrific work on the board, Virgil, all you guys, Sheriff Warren, you know, you're staying right up. We have some really great advisors. But this is something we have to, we have to monitor very closely. And I think you made, you made some really good points here. The fact that going from 8% down to 7 and 1/2, all right, we've been fortunate because of the good work that the board has done, but also the great advisors, that we can at least stay stable, even the liabilities have grown. But we need to start growing the assets here. Because we have this large body of people that's on the traditional plan, that's about, that's going to retire. And they're going to take a big chunk of money out of our wallet here. And the, and the people that come in behind them are not going to resupply that amount because they're not, they're not contributing as much as the old people did. So, was there more slides here?
No, I think we, I think we got, this chart right here, uh, kind of tells the whole story.
Yeah, that tells the whole story right there.
Yeah. I mean, and then we followed up just by reflecting the fact that we have done his experience study that will be integrated into our actuarial report for, uh, calendar year 2017.
Okay. Well, I commend you and the board for what you've done to your leadership, Roger. You've been fantastic. And, and everyone on the board's been really, really on top of it. We can't simply thank you enough.
Do you want to go?
Thank you.
All right. Um, sorry, one quick clarification. Uh, we talked about the experience study. This isn't something we do every year. We do this every three to five years. So that's why you see some fluctuations. But we just want to give you a little, little idea of the timeframe for those.
So fact, what we need to, we need to start hiring people when they're 70, right? Is that your proposal, Bill?
No, sir.
And they have to stay for 30 years? Will that address our, our asset, our reliability issue?
I, I'm not going to give any recommendations, sir. Sorry.
Can we have a copy of this?
That'd be great. If you can all have a copy of this, Roger, it'd be great.
And I'll, I'll, so, okay, I'll correct some of the, anything that resembles a typo. So I'll forward it back out to you, okay?
And we'll post this on the pension website as well. So we'll make sure all the board commissioners have a copy of the PowerPoint and the, the Word doc, and all that'll be available for tech top employees as well.
Well, thank you so much for all you've done, Roger, and for the everything. Appreciate it. So with that, we're adjourned.